All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order and I'd ask you all to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everybody for coming to the special meeting of the Board of Education. And the purpose of the meeting this evening is to be talking about and receiving public input around the various proposals of road realignment through the school district property. I do want to take one quick moment to thank Board Member Rich Wolfe, who suggested that this meeting be livestreamed and taped for public access television and web streaming. So technology's been a wonderful thing that allows us to be more transparent in the proceedings that we have and to be able to share the discussion with a broader audience. So, thank you, Rich. This is the culmination or the process of gathering input. We did something very similar a number of years ago when this issue first arose. And as we start to talk about what the whole corridor between County Road 27, County Road 44, and the development of the Prior Lake aggregate site and how that affects the school district's development plan and how we tie in to the whole plan and structure. Tonight's open forum is going to be one where we're going to have a short presentation by Superintendent Gruber and an overview led by our consultant, world architect. Then we'll take public input after that point. And we'll just make sure that we have a very orderly conversation. At the end, we'll review the timeline of events going forward after that. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Gruber.
Thank you, Eric. First, I would like to recognize that we have consultants here that are helping us tonight. We have from world architects Paul Aplicowski and Scott McQueen over there. And John Powell from the city of Savage is here, as well as Jay Squires from Ratlick, Rosack, and Maloney, who is our legal counsel, all here to be listening and to hear your feedback as we move forward. I'm the third superintendent to have this particular topic on my agenda. For the last three years, we have been in a building committee, which is comprised of our consultants and our school board members, three members of our school board sit on that committee, as well as administration, to talk about a variety of different topics that relate to our buildings and grounds. And this topic of SS9 has been on that agenda for many meetings throughout those three years. Right now, it's coming back to us because, as you know, Scott County is beginning to develop their plans for widening 27 and widening 44, and that work is to begin this summer. So whereas we put it on the back burner for a year or so, when the economy had started to drop and it wasn't to anyone's best interests to pursue it, we are beginning to have those conversations again and develop plans and procedures. We have, over the course of the three years I've been in this district, had multiple different plans on what would be the best way to access what we know is the city of Savage plat for a roadway through the south end of our Prior Lake high school land. What you're going to see tonight are two different options that we have looked at over time. One is we do nothing, and one is if we do something different, that Paul's going to talk about. But as we go forward, what we want to do is share with you where we've been so that you understand where we are today, and then take your input tonight as we move forward into making decisions in the future. Prior Lake High School, the whole property is 132 acres. Of that acreage, 7.6 acres is called SS9. If SS9 would be removed, then we would have 34 percent of our high school acreage designated as natural areas for our school district. So as you move forward and think about that, this is one small part of the entire project that we have at the high school and of the land that we value there. So in that context, I'd like to invite Paul Aplicowski to come up and share with you the two options that we've considered as a building committee and that we're bringing forward to the school board for dialogue and discussion.
As Sue Ann mentioned, there's sort of two what we're calling proposals before you tonight. And the first one really represents the status quo, if you will. When the high school was originally developed, it consisted of, I believe, nine different parcels from seven different parties. And as part of the development of the high school, you applied to the city and county to replat that land. As part of a site plan review process with the city, they identified a need to create an accessway for the future aggregate site as it became developed into a neighborhood or other development. And honestly, that desire existed before you bought the site. There's diagrams predating your even interest in this site that show a desire to have that access, so it goes way back. In the development of that plat, the line you see here at the south end of the drawing that's in gray, let me get this to work, this piece here, is the agreed-upon alignment for that. As part of the high school development, when you did that plat, you dedicated that area to the city of Savage for that road. So that piece of land actually belongs to the city of Savage. And this current step that we're in is discussing alternatives to that. The city of Savage has every right to put a road on that piece of land. That's their thing. And it appears at this time, in agreement with your neighbor, there might be an opportunity to do it a different way that might work out better for all parties involved. I'll go just briefly over what this would look like if Proposal 1 is the way it would go. The city has indicated that they would prefer to save as much as possible of SS9 and would build retaining walls along the edge of that. One thing that's hard to see in this diagram is that road actually goes over the edge of the hill, so a significant portion of the hill has to be cut along the edge, creating a retaining wall that's estimated roughly 800 feet long, an average, I think, of about 12 feet high, but parts of it would be as high as 25 feet high. And then the road would be developed along that there. That is estimated to be about a $1.9 million project to do that. And it would take away smaller, small portions of SS9. In addition, since, long since the high school was platted, the city has identified a need, along with the county planning, to create another access down here. That's this red arrow down at the bottom. That would be another, that would be the way that they would resolve the end of your road. As you can see, your road comes down to the end. It doesn't continue as a city street or as a right-of-way. So that's the proposed resolution for connecting those. Proposal 2 is one of many options that have been looked at over the years for how to change the way that thing might look. I should go back one second. Another piece that's driving this is, in addition to the retaining wall that would run along the edge of the road here, in order for Prior Lake aggregates to develop their site down here, they would build a retaining wall along this edge to cap the other side of that. And that one is estimated to be as tall as 80 feet in many spots. We don't have a final design for that, but there's a significant grade that needs to be reconciled there. And that is, for a long time, been looked at as not necessarily desirable for a school site to have those retaining walls there. So alternate proposals have been worked on. This particular one, it seems to be the favored idea, the most developed idea. It assumes that that south road on the end of the site would exist, as discussed, but that you could take the existing right-of-way and trade it for a piece at the north here that would go into the aggregate site. And that would allow you to not have very many retaining walls. There would be a few, some to do grades here, and there may be some in here to preserve some of the natural areas in there, but it'd be pretty minimal. And that would also provide the opportunity to create a few extra fields. And part of the proposal is that that work would be done by Prior Lake aggregates at little or no cost to the school district. And this, of course, would involve the removal of SS9 to make all that happening. And the cost of this is estimated at about $418,000. That is strictly the cost of that northern road, which would be a city project which may or may not be assessed back to the district in some percentage. And I think that's a kind of an outline of the two pieces. If there's any questions or...
What I would like just to add is that the objectives of our committee have been all along, student safety and cost avoidance. Student safety in terms of what that traffic looks like as it comes up to the stoplight. For one thing, that has been a major area of concern throughout our three years, my three years of talking about this. The school buses come out one side, how much traffic is coming out the other side, the south part, whether it's from Proposal 1 or 2, and what impact that might have on student safety there, as well as the safety considerations of building any walls as they relate to our students and making sure that they're making safe choices.
Okay. Then I'll go ahead and open up the floor for public comment. Let me just kind of talk about how I think this can work in an orderly way. Please step up to the microphone, state your name, your city of residence, if you're affiliated with any organizations that you're here to represent. This is not a venue for personal comments. This is really for the board to take input from our community regarding this issue. Your comments will be recorded. They're being livestreamed now, and they'll be replayed on Channel 17 Access. So we won't be writing them down, per se, but they will be recorded and available for public comment. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If at the end of three minutes, I may give you a little prompt, I will entertain a request for an additional two. But in order to keep the discussion going, we have a lot of people, I want to make sure that we get an opportunity to hear as many people as possible. I may ask, after one side has been heard, I may ask if there's anybody that wants to speak from the other side, just to make sure that we keep the flow of the conversation going. I'd like to have this be a discussion, but not a debate. And so hopefully, we can keep that going. If not, we'll try to limit that down to where the board is listening. Your feedback will then be taken back by the entire board, predominantly the building committee, the administration, and see if there are any amendments to the proposals that we have following that. Everybody will be recognized by the chair, board members, community members. And it's prerogative of the chair then to take the floor back at that point in time. But I hope we have just a really good dialogue tonight. So, without further ado, I'll... Yes?
Will representatives here be able to answer any questions that are brought up during the comment period?
You know, I think what I don't want to have is a debate between our folks here as resources and the people who are making the comments. However, they're here for us to get the full, to get all the information that we need to make an informed decision. So if you have a clarifying question from one of our resources, it'll be appropriate for you to do that, once recognized by the chair. All right. So I'll go ahead and open up the floor to anybody that'd like to address the board on this issue.
Ladies and gentlemen and children of Prior Lake, thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. I hope my voice, the voice of a young child, is heard and that you accept my concerns that are so strong I would like to speak to you today. My name is Natalie Decker. I'm a 4th grader at Jeffers Pond Elementary, and this is my second year as a junior naturalist. And I was also proud to represent the Prior Lake Salaret from 2009 to 2010 because we have so many wonderful resources. And I'm a Girl Scout and I inquire at Jeffers Pond. It is the school board's job to represent the opinions of people in Prior Lake. The children in Prior Lake are the future, so please think about what we want. As a junior naturalist, I've been taught by our teachers to take care of our environment. Some simple ways we can do this are to plant flowers for bees and butterflies and to build bird feeders and birdhouses to help wildlife survive. We are also taught to use our resources wisely. Easy ways to do this are to turn off the water when you are brushing your teeth or to save electricity by shutting off the lights when you leave a room. Our junior naturalist leaders also tell us to protect forests around the world from pollution and destruction. I'm only 10, but in the past few years, I've seen many beautiful, irreplaceable trees in our town chopped down. For example, the trees across from the library were removed. This shocked many people, but what is there now? Nothing. The trees are gone. We can never get them back. Also, in the YMCA, many more beautiful trees have been chopped down to build a road to a place you can already get to very easily. But those trees are gone, and we can never get them back. Like most girls of my age, I've read the books by Laura Ingalls Wilder. I've watched the TV show based on the books and even seen A Little House in the Prairie with Melissa Gilbert. I think it's fantastic to live so close to part of the big woods she lived in and wrote about. The thought of chopping down those trees for something as common as a road makes me very sad and upset. Those trees are part of history. Those trees connect us to some of the most popular books ever written. Those trees set us apart from every other suburb in the area. Everything I've been taught, both in the classroom and as a junior naturalist, tells me that chopping down those trees is absolutely wrong. Chopping down those trees does not help us take care of our environment. Chopping down those trees does not help us use our resources wisely. Chopping down those trees does not protect our forests. Like the trees across from the library and like the trees across from the YMCA, once these trees are gone, we can never get them back. That is something that should make all of us upset and sad, and it should never happen. Before I go, I would just like to ask you to remember me when you think about those trees. They are vital and a rare part of our history, but they're also important to our future. Lastly, I would like you to remember what my teachers have been teaching me, both in the classroom and as a junior naturalist. They've been teaching me and all of the other children in Prior Lake to take care of our environment and respect the earth. It's the only home we've got. While my mom and dad want me to stay a little forever, personally, I can't wait to go to the high school so I can get a chance to participate in some environmental learning in those woods. I regret that I won't be able to stay until the end of the meeting, but tonight is a school night, and I bet I was at 8 o'clock. Please don't let me wake up to a world without those trees. Please do the right thing to save the trees. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that's a tough act to follow. It's very heartfelt and thoughtful words. Please state your name and where you go to school.
What?
What's your name and where do you go to school?
Hi, I am Nicholas Decker, and I go to... And I am a 2nd grader at Jeffers Pond. Tonight, I would like to tell you about one of my favorite books, The Lorax by Dr. Seuss. Maybe some of you have read it before. To me, it seems to have a lot to do with what we're talking about here tonight. In this book, a small boy meets a man who lives in a broken-down old factory where a forest used to be. The boy asks the man, whose name is... Whose name was the Wunseler, who had things... Who had... Mr. Wunseler tells him there used to be a beautiful forest here and no factory at all. There used to be birds flying in the air and fish swimming in the river. But Mr. Wunseler found the forest and decided to start chopping down trees, called trephula trees, so he could turn them into thneed and make money. That's when The Lorax came and spoke up to him for the first time. "Mr.," he said with a sadistic sneeze, "I'm The Lorax. I speak for the trees. I speak for the trees, for the trees have no tongues, and I'm asking you at the top of my lungs." He was very upset and shouted and puffed. "What's that thing you have made out of my trephula tough?" Mr. Wunseler does not listen to The Lorax. He chops down more trephula trees to make more thneed. He builds a factory to make thneed even faster. The Lorax comes back to him again and again, asking him to stop chopping down all the trephula trees. But Mr. Wunseler does never listen to The Lorax. And so Mr. Wunseler ended up chopping down all the trees. The birds and fish had nowhere to live. Even The Lorax left at the end. And all The Lorax left here in this mess was a small pile of rocks and... With one word, "unless," whatever that meant. I just couldn't guess. "But now," says the Wunseler, "now that you're here, the words of The Lorax seem pretty clear. Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not." "Tonight, I'm like The Lorax. I speak for the trees because the trees have no tongues." It sure would have been nice if the Wunseler wouldn't have lis... It would have been nice if the Wunseler would have listened, but he didn't. He destroyed the forest for roads in a factory. And so I'm asking you now, before it's too late, don't be like Mr. Wunseler and do the right thing and save the trees. Thank you."
Thank you. Anyone else?
I guess you're stuck with me. My name is Justin Decker. You're probably sick of all us Deckers by now. Sorry about that. We've lived in Prior Lake for 11 years, my wife and my kids and I. We used to live in Apple Valley, moved over here. And what brought us to Prior Lake was the fact that there were so many beautiful green spaces. We were near the city, but we weren't in the city. I grew up in southwestern Minnesota in a town called Worthington, right on the prairie. You could hear the wind blowing for miles. You could see forever. It was fabulous. When I grew up down there, I was taught to respect the land. All of my grandparents were farmers. They made their living from the land. They lived and died by it, quite literally. They disrespected the land. They didn't treat it right. They didn't raise any crops. They didn't eat. They would be out of work. So they made it their point to be good stewards of the land, farm up responsibly, treat their animals with respect. And as a result, they were both, on both sides, they were very, very successful farmers. When I was a kid, they would say things to me like, "Take care of the land, and it will take care of you." I didn't really understand what that meant when I was a kid. Didn't really pay attention. My grandfather was also very fond of saying, "You know, there's no place I need to go that there isn't already a road to get me there." He was a big advocate, believing in the way things are. All my grandparents are deceased now, but the older I get, the more I find that the lessons that they taught me as a child figure heavily into how I parent. And though they didn't use these words, the... Just about boils down to one simple concept: Walk the Talk. Just tell them it's important. Show them it's important. My wife and I like to tell our children that charity is important. We show them that by donating to causes we believe in. One way we make that a little bit more real for the children is during Christmas time, whenever we pass a bell ringer for the Salvation Army, we're very quick to get money out to those kids to put in those buckets so that they can connect. They can understand what charity's all about. We tell them education is important. We show them that by double-checking their homework, studying with them routinely and rigorously for their tests. I volunteer countless hours in the classrooms to help the teachers get messages across, get work done, chaperone field trips, help put on the parties for the kids. All that feeds in. We tell our children the environment is important. We show them that by how we live our lives. We recycle everything that can possibly be recycled. We buy a lot of stuff secondhand, as long as it can be purchased secondhand, because that reduces. We teach them not to buy things that are hopelessly overpackaged because that's environmentally irresponsible. We tell them to give back to the community because that's important. One of the ways that I do that is I'm vice president of the Prior Lake Players Community Theater. I put in countless hours on the stage and behind the scenes to help bring theater into this area because we believe that that's important, cultural enrichment. When building the new high school, this exact spot was selected because of these trees. We paid more money for this spot, as I seem to recall, because of these trees. We felt that strongly. A direct quote that I seem to remember was, "This makes it the crown jewel." Wonderful, beautiful. What can have changed in this short amount of time? Well, now it's time for you all to walk the talk, each and every one of you, with how you vote and how you react to this issue. Our teachers and junior naturalist leaders tell our children to love the earth, take care of the planet, respect the environment. You all here have a direct and an immediate ability to show them what that means, to show them preservation in action. Here is your chance to prove that all of this environmental education that goes on within the Prior Lake Savage School District isn't just talk. Those trees are a part of our history. They're a part of our collective inheritance and legacy as members of this community. They have been here longer than any of us in this room, longer than there's been a city of Prior Lake. The decision you're about to make is going to be a part of history as well. It will be how you're all remembered. Can you walk the talk? Can you take care of the land so that it takes care of us? Are you good stewards of the land? Are you guardians of it? Can you save the trees and close the books on this issue forever? Or will they go? And will you deprive the future generations of a beautiful and rare piece of our past? Whatever your decision is, I won't forget. The other people in this room won't forget. My children and all of the other children in Prior Lake, in the Savage area, who go to school here, they won't forget either. And let's remember, they are why we're all here. They're why I'm here as a parent. They're why you're here as members of the school board. They're the future. Let's please protect those trees for that. Thank you.
Again, I'm going to ask that we keep the comments fairly concise. I don't want to interrupt anybody, but please, we need to keep it moving along.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Dwayne Shambar. I live over in the Franciscan Retreat. Registered architect? Where's our civil engineer? That's my first question. Because a civil engineer is going to better define to the people here what's taking place, what isn't taking place, options, feasibility studies, and so forth. I'm disappointed that we don't have our civil engineer here. I'm also disappointed that we don't have a copy of the county's proposal, which we sat in here, it was about a year ago. We showed multiple entrances into the aggregate capital site, which had nothing to do with the SS9 project. There was another feasible option. So I'm disappointed that that information is not available for these people to see. You don't want people's public opinion. You want data. Yet, people's public opinion is what drives this whole thing. I've lived next to aggregate gravel for twenty-four years. Undesirable neighbor. They have no respect for any of us. The dust, the noise, the after-hours work.
Excuse me. We're... We're here to talk about the proposal. Well, I... Let's not disparage Prior Lake Aggregate at this point. Um, this is... This is about the proposal to realign the road.
This is the proposal realignment, but the issue I'm getting at with aggregate gravel is that it... It feels to a lot of us that because they're proposing to pay for something, which really isn't costing them a whole lot, that it's like, okay. It's okay to bulldoze this... This sector of woods, because aggregate gravel wants a development, and they're going to help you out to get something done. It seems you're bypassing everybody's opinion, because somebody's offering to help you out for nothing. Well, and the other thing that's disappointing is why is this school district spending $7,000 to remove trees? How come we move them for free? Right here is an article today about the buckthorn, which in this article you made costly. Here is an article that talks about it being done by volunteers. You keep posting negative comments in the paper, but it costs us so much money. It costs this. Yet, you kind of stuck yourself in the foot, because here's a whole bunch of things that show otherwise. I can't go on about it, but I'm disappointed that you don't have the civil engineer here. You don't have the county's proposal here. You're not presenting all the facts to the people. Thank you.
Is it fair to say that we contract with World Architecture for Civil Engineering, correct?
Well, uh, I'm projects, yeah.
Okay.
Some of the engineering is not the engineering debate on this.
And... And we have had... We have had civil engineering input on this issue. Okay. Was there anything else? Uh, and then, real quick, to the gentleman's point, all the county road proposals are, in fact, public documents and available for review. Is that correct? Okay.
Very touchy subject, as you can probably all tell. I'm a tree hugger. I'm also president and vice president, secretary, treasurer, and lone attendee of Friends of the Forest, Prior Lake Savage Friends of the Forest, so if anybody's interested in... Actually, I hope it never has to come to fruition.
I'm sorry. Could you state your name and residence?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Dee Wilkins. I've lived in Prior Lake forty of my fifty-five years. Yeah, I know. And, uh, I have a couple of watch things that I do, but this is the first time I've ever... What am I doing on a Saturday afternoon, making a sign like that? I'm thinking, I shouldn't have to. I'm thinking I shouldn't have to worry about what's going to happen in April, when all of this has been going on for three years. I was happy that the economy went bad, so they had to put it in the back burner, and I didn't have to do anything about it. But now, I just feel like I have to. Um, I don't have multimedia options. I'm not into computers or anything, so I made a sign. All our trees have been put in the trash by a company that wants to develop what's going to be a very profitable piece of property. It's going to fill up. I take it from the water table, and then we're going to put houses of people that have never paid taxes here in Prior Lake to get to live there. And SS9 is only 7.6 acres, is that what you're saying? We can't save that? I think they have enough sand and gravel there to make their own road someplace else. Thank you.
Uh, just point of clarification, the... The property we're talking about is within the city of Savage, not within the city of Prior Lake. Um, and... And that's... That's just a minor issue, but I just want to make sure it's clear for the record.
I'm Rick Keel. You probably know the name Keel. There are forests in the Hall of Fame. And I'm a resident here for the last forty-some years. And, uh, I watched this SS9 issue for the last three years. And for the earlier thirty-seven year, I watched SS9 from our house with pride and joy every morning. And I saw somebody start chipping away on it and chipping away on it. And now, for the last couple of years, I see a gravel, uh, slope that reaches to within, I almost said inches, within feet of the district's boundary. And the slope is so fast that it is currently, every time that it rains, it erodes further. That is your neighbor. Excuse me that I mentioned that big gorilla that an earlier staff member of the district referred to as a neighbor. Partnership is here very important. Partnership is important for human life. Uh, so we are belittling now that engagement, the area of SS9, we talked about how we haven't spent money on it. Well, if my neighbor, if your neighbor would start digging a hole, I don't know how many hundred feet deep, to within your boundary, at your very edge of your property, if he would expose the roots of your trees, literally expose them, I've seen them up there. I was up there with the mayor from Savage. Would you call that a guy to partner with? Do you really think that's a good guy to partner with? Now, when that guy came to you about three years ago, to the building committee, and proposed that he would level the hill and haul away the gravel to build you two or three, um, athletic fields that now are called not to be used or not even used during school hours, one of, uh, one of the committee members reportedly, I read it in the Prior Lake paper, said, "When can we begin?" Now, three years later, the building committee came up to you, dear board members, and presented two options in a big hurry, words like "a window of opportunity." Those are the words that I read in the paper that were used here. I heard those words on a couple of used car lots. And I was almost swayed, till my wife pulled me back and said, "No, no, no." So I urge you to ask the real questions now. What are the other opportunities? What opportunities are there on that almost a mile-long new county road 33 that borders at this land that is to be developed? Why could ask the committee, could possibly Savage or whoever builds make access to the land from county road 33? I have a beautiful slope in front of my house, a fabulous building site. It has no access right now. I asked my neighbor whether he couldn't remove his house and just leave the driveway there for that other house I want to build on my property. I'm developing it. Now, this new... This is your proposal that the committee brought to you, dear board member, tells you all what's in it for other people. It hardly says anything what's for you. It says that it... It would leave, uh, two, a parking lot maybe, and two athletic fields that wouldn't even be used during school hours. Now, good Lord, high, high up, it's there on the priority list of you members who laid off or are laying off, I think, twenty-six teachers. Now, this is not the time to build two not-used athletic fields truly. And the urgency you are asked, this window of opportunity. I ask you, forget it. Go back to work and come back and tell us what's in it for our district. What's in it for our students? So far, I haven't heard any of that. I... I want more point. I hear here referring to this, this, uh, organization, this municipality, and this one. Savage is pushing this apparently. Well, I don't see it that way. I know who is pushing. Follow the money, and you know who is pushing it. I know that the present site that Savage and, uh, Prior Lake plans to develop will be the site for a mine gravel processing place where they wash, crush, and store gravel for at least another ten years.
Mr. Keel.
Because that's the plan in Savage, in... In Chappell. The gravel from across county road 33 is scheduled to be hauled under the county road 33 to the present site, to be processed there, to be washed there, to be crushed there, to be shipped from there on the roads that you like to partner with in building with not people who come to buy houses there.
Mr. Keel, may I... May I ask you to wrap up your comments, please?
Take a turn.
Could I ask you to wrap... Wrap up?
Wrap it up. So I urge you, take another look. Look at all the options, not at those two options. If somebody comes with two options, be careful. Like the old Romans said, "Quick for the best, timias doreas et doner adantis." Whatever it is, be careful, especially when they come trying to bring gifts. Troy has been destroyed after the... The Trojan left Ulysses. You know whom I talk about, Jean, to sex the city.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
Thank you for your comments. I'm gonna... I'm gonna use some prerogative here just for a moment and see if there are any questions from the board members on what they've heard so far. Uh, any comments? Okay. We'll move on.
Brian Broadwell, uh, city of Savage. And actually, I was a member of the planning commission, vice chair, when the, uh, Prior Lake High School was proposed to Savage. So I've spent some time looking at the plans. And, uh, I do want to correct one thing, that is that both the chair and the vice chair, myself and Gene Abbott, were not aware of any easement when the plan was presented to Savage. That was actually put into the developers agreement after it was presented to planning commission and approved by the city council. Uh, so we never had seen anything in terms of an easement coming through when it was presented to us, uh, back in 2002. Okay, which, uh, brings us to the next point. I want to make sure I'm... I've had a conversation and exchanged emails, actually, with Dr. Gruber, and she said the same thing that she did to the paper, which is safety and efficiency for the students, right? I think there are other options out there. As the previous guest mentioned, there are other options out there that are not being explored that would address that and actually achieve those goals much better than the two options you have in front of you tonight. Uh, first of all, we have to keep traffic off the school property. The school is being, uh, I've talked to the city. I've talked to the mayor of Savage. I've talked to each of the school, or the city council members as well. They're waiting for you to come to them. To quote the mayor, "We do nothing until the school district comes to us and presents us something." Okay, so to say that the city is proposing this or driving you to a decision is not true, okay? The other piece is, the city, in terms of its staff, may be pushing you, right? And that may be true. And formally, behind the scenes, not sure, right? But the city does not come to you and say, "Please come to us and tell us what you want to do with this property." They don't do that to any of their residents, to be fair, right? You are another property owner, just like anybody else, like myself would be, okay? The other piece is avoiding large retaining walls. The reason we're doing large retaining walls is because that property, number one, as you mentioned before, on... On the aggregate side is so steep in terms of the slope. Number two, on the other side as well, is because of the need to drive that easement down to minimize the damage to the forest. The other thing that you want to do is minimize the financial assessment to the property. And I've had conversations with, uh, Mr. Wolf as well on this topic, and one of the concerns from the school district was the assessments, right? The way you want to minimize assessments is not do anything to your property that the city provides, right? If they can buy my street and they refinish it, right, they charge me. I got a benefit out of it. If you don't get a benefit from the assessment or the... Or the development, you don't get a charge, right? When you put a road through your property, you... Better the property, you increase its value identity. At least from the city point of view, that's true. Access, like management set. If you have access to a house, you want to develop the back light, what do you want to do? You want to get a road to the back of the property, right? Because that means that that person will buy that property than that, right? The other piece is, is you want to avoid the additional traffic coming through the school district, okay? It's pretty clear when you look at the plans, and I've studied them at length, that the only way to get a frontage road that has any value is to go from 150th Street all the way down to 44. The only way you get a frontage road to go that way is at either in front of the school right now, or you go through the parking lot. Okay, I've driven that parking lot. I've had now two kids graduate from the high school, and I got one there, right? That parking lot is now anywhere I want to go between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM on the day, okay? Uh, I've had several vehicles that have been, you know, hit, you know? I've been near hits several times, right? It's not a safe place. So if that's the plan, the city's presented to you, if that's the frontage road going along there through that, uh, parking lot, that's probably not the best alternative. Lastly, if they do that, again, have a frontage road, it will only go that thousand feet from 154th Street down to 44. I keep asking the city council members, "What's the value? Why do we need to do this?" Well, we need an access into the property, right? So to the earlier point, property under question here that's being developed is driving the need for the access. The school does not need the access there, from what I can tell. So it is the driver, and the question is, why do they need accessing? How many accesses do they need? This is what planning commission members deal with, right? Do you have life and safety access? Do you have the number of accesses? Do you want to minimize the number of stoplights? Do you want to minimize the safety? And they're not right in, right out. I mean, we used to have dreams about those things, right? So from that perspective, you want to make sure the accesses are right, okay? The... The thing I keep coming back to, and I... I was there when we guided the plan for 2010 comp plan, which is where we're now at. We did that back in 2004. All along the eastern side of 27 is commercial development. That was intended to be a small strip mall, make Super America Holiday, you know, a couple of other businesses along that way. It was intended to serve this area down here as that perspective. Secondarily, on the other side, was intended primarily to be residential, as you've seen the guided plan, right? It would make a whole lot more sense to take the frontage road on the east side of the road and work its way all the way down to the stoplight or the roundabout, whatever will be there at 44 and 27, all the way up to 154th Street. Okay, you have no real impediments if you start a couple hundred feet in, there's already a road there. An existing easement that was there, maybe it's been purchased back from the old 27, okay? Go all the way down that road. It would keep the kids safe, because it would be on the other side of the road. It would create no assessment to you whatsoever, because it's on the other side of the road. It's on your property, okay? No retaining walls. It just requires a little more vision and a little more planning. The fact that that option has not been considered at all with this much time and energy is disappointing. All right? Lastly, the piece on the school, the school, I've talked to teachers, I've emailed them, and they actually do use that property out and do the woods for environmental science class. They also have FIAD classes out there. Uh, I know these things firsthand. My daughter's boyfriend snowshod out there the day I wrote my letter to the editor, right? It's like, "Do you guys use it?" "Yes, we do," blah, blah, blah. So I mean, here's... Give me the... Give me the teachers, right? So I've got four teachers I'm corresponding with today, trying to find information out. So the... The property is being used by the school, despite what some people may say as well. Lastly, people said that somebody would pay for the fields. So I not only emailed the Harlock Soccer Club, but also PLA Y. Neither one of them are aware of it or supporting it in terms of financial contributions, which means somebody's paying for the development of the properties, which I think I figured out tonight is Harlock's aggregates, is developing the fields, because the other two clubs are not doing that. Uh, somebody can clarify that for me, if you would, that'd be great. So I guess in summary, to the earlier... Earlier presenter, two options on the table are neither one are very viable. They both require you to spend money. I don't see the need for it, and it's not being driven by the city. And if it is, it's something that's in your control, and you can say no. You do not need to develop that property. You do not need to put the road through there. The only reason to do that is if you want to do that, and you would gain benefit from it, because you will be assessed for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, I'd like to just take a... A moment for a point of clarification. The board this evening, um, through the building committee, saw a first draft of agreements that we would... That we would look at, um, with Prior Lake Aggregate. There... There are three agreements that would need to be executed. Agreement between the school district and Prior Lake Aggregate, uh, an agreement between the city and the school district, and also probably a... Some sort of agreement between Prior Lake Aggregate and the city. And so that lays out the various roles and responsibilities. Um, Mr. Abbott shared his... His plan with the building committee. Um, we did, in fact, uh, vet that out. Part of the problem is with, um, uh, the realignment of county road, uh, 44 and 27. And I'd just ask, uh, Mr. Powell for any comments.
Well, before you go on, actually, Mr. Abbott, I've had conversations, and he sent you an email earlier today and copied me on it as well, to all the board members, about a third option as well.
I have not seen that.
I have, and I can show it to you if you'd like. Uh, it's in your inbox. Uh, so from... Richard, you have? Okay. Uh, it does give the option of still, at the very bottom of the property, if you don't like the idea of going down the east side, which I do... if you don't like the idea of going down the east side, which I do, there's still a third option as well. I call mine the fourth. But there's a third option on the south end of the property where you could then skirt the property, minimize your assessment, minimize retaining walls, and not have to affect assets not at all.
But we still have the road going through the middle of the property?
No, you wouldn't. It would be on the southern boundary of your property.
That's the option that was presented in the Building Committee?
That's not my understanding.
Well...
But I'm sure it'll be cleared up. I'm sure you check into it.
In fact, we had... I think we...
It's not either proposal or proposal.
No, I understand. And that came...
And I can share with you if you'd like. I have a hard copy of the paper tonight. If you'd like me to submit it as evidence.
Okay. No, I agree with you. And I recall the conversation with Mr. Abbott. He came to our Building Committee. We discussed it on the phone. We raised the same questions with the City of Savage. And we were advised, and I'll let Mr. Powell talk, that that was not a viable option for us.
By who?
Yes, Mr. Powell?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
We have him standing. Oh, we'll need a mic or something. I don't want to get into a debate, but I want to make sure that we've got... we're all talking on the same fact.
I want to hear all the facts.
Exactly. And what I'm...
You have it. I'm glad you're...
And that's fine. I just want... But we have looked at alternative options. These are the two that we're bringing forward. But that's not to say that we haven't looked at alternative options as well, including the recommendation of Mr. Abbott.
Unless you talked to him yesterday.
Okay.
You did it yesterday. He and I had a conversation Sunday morning. He did it last night, and I got it today.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm disadvantaged because I don't know what Mr. Abbott's presented to this gentleman or to the board. I'll try and use the... tell us... excuse me, Pell Strator. When we looked at the city, the City of Savage initiated a study of the 44-27 intersection in anticipation of the development of the Parlay Lake Aggregate site. That was in response to an earlier AOWAR that PLA did that showed primarily an east-west orientation of the main thoroughfare with Texas Avenue, if you will, connecting into that. The result of the city's study was that 27, based on future growth, the north-south corridor should be the main thoroughfare in 44 with tie into that. As a part of those discussions, Scott County also looked at other access to the Parlay Lake Aggregate site. And that's really where this roadway here came in, this red dash line, which is not really an option that you're considering this evening. That's the location of a future direct connection to Parlay Lake Aggregate from County Road 27. What the discussion this evening is about is local road connections into Parlay Lake Aggregate or into this roadway area here. It's really this road or the road that was described that goes through here. The southern road is going to be an access in the future really regardless. That's where the identified location for an access directly to Parlay Lake Aggregate is. But when the Parlay Lake High School site was planted, there was actually dedicated right-of-way, which is shown north-south. That's this part right here. I'm confused as to how the City Council couldn't have seen that there was planted right-of-way there because it's a right-of... it shows up right on your plat documents that it's planted. And what we're looking at now is a connection from 154th to Parlay Lake Aggregate, not this southern alignment here. And the two alignments that are being considered for that connection are the north-south roadway or that east-west roadway at the north end. From a traffic circulation standpoint, city staff has expressed a concern that if you are traffic at the high school, for instance, and you are going to anywhere in the Parlay Lake Aggregate site, you come out the 154th signal, you go down 27, then you turn right back in. And we want a local road connection provided to the Parlay Lake Aggregate site beyond what's provided at the south end. My understanding is that was also one of the assumptions as part of the approval of the signal at 154th Street, that that was going to be a public roadway, and it would have a future local road connection. And the city does work cooperatively with Scott County on access, location, and local road connections. And they are very supportive of the city establishing local road connections to avoid traffic having to go out on county roads and then come back in. And so I just wanted to clarify that. That's south road, and I'm not sure what's being discussed as far as options. And an option on the east side of 27 doesn't do anything for the local road circulation on the west side of 27. It would provide access through the signal and a right turn down to some future commercial area. But we did consider a frontage road that was aligned further east of the existing right-of-way. And that would take... make most of those existing fields unusable and will also create traffic backup concerns with turning movements both at the north end and the south end because the traffic circulation of 154th and that future local road is a primary concern of the city and also of the school district, how that functions and making sure it functions safely. And so that's... I hope that addresses your questions that you had at this point. And I'm concerned I'll come back later and clean up this figure that I scribbled on.
Thanks, John.
Do you address why we have this practice that the primary road is for school property? How many students could be there to stay? Do you have any other...
I don't think this is... I don't think the primary use of the road is for student traffic.
What we just heard.
Mr. Chair, it's both for student traffic and public traffic that may be getting to the high school because there will be a significant amount of development in the Parlay Lake Aggregate site sometime in the future, based on their plans. And the roadway that's planted there, and I want to clarify that, the city has planted right-of-way. So we do already have alignment that could be used, so...
I don't want to get into a debate. Maybe we can take the soft line...
I don't want to do either, Mr. Chair. But I think that needs to come up. That's the point of the conversation, is to have a conversation of positions, right? I was there when this was created as well.
Right.
It may very well be planted. That's not the point. My point is, what is the documented need? Because we have to have those conversations because you're going to be charged $2 million. The city's going to build a $2 million road to do that, right? But to do that, they're going to say, "This is of value to you." Right? When we've had the site, two entrances would be totally sufficient to handle that wall and the traffic, even with another potter and sewer set. There was no need for a herd entrance that was never applied or discussed as part of the plan.
Well, as I recall it from the Building Committee at the time that we built the high school, we were told that that was a requirement as part of the developers agreement. We've... What we've been looking at is this being more of an access road for the residential component of the site versus the commercial component of the site, which is part of the reason why the second alignment is or the revised alignment is preferable. What I would like to suggest at this point, rather than getting into a debate...
We put out a book because you just said right now there's going to be a second access down the core of the development.
Right. And that was the access that we talked about with Mr. Abbott, as turning that into a four-way stop. What I'd like to do is, the Building Committee, the City of Savage, has not had an opportunity to review the revised proposal or the recommendation from Councilman Abbott. And I think it probably warrants some discussion before we bring it up much more here. But I would suggest that you share that with Mr. Powell and Mr. Stock. It sounds like we already have it, and I'll take a look at it when I get a chance.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're good. Thanks. We're good for now, John. Yes, sorry to hold you up.
Okay. I'm Bart Kahn, Sav's resident. Actually, the property west of... or I'm sorry, east of the pond, on the property that I own, we bought it from the original people that developed the property for Parlay Lake School District, which was originally 140 acres. It was their development and vision with the school and to put part of this land into a preserve known as SS9. Unfortunately, we're talking today about, you know, taking that property out of SS9 and taking it and not preserving any further. I guess my question in the reading and everything I see is why are we, the City of Savage and the Parlay Lake School District, Savage School District, trying to bail out or create a... solve a problem for a business? And we're talking about right-of-ways and easements and those types of things. It really isn't your discretion as a school district to figure out the city's issues as far as who's getting into a residential area and why they should access that. Now, I have a vested interest, obviously, because if you put that road around that little lake there, obviously, our property devalues. All the properties that are in the back end that are built up on the private woods facing the east would also be devalued with the new road going through there. So even though it's less costly, I don't see the value in it, you know, from what I'm hearing today and what I read. Putting a road through there for access, I can understand access, you know, from a city perspective, Savage, you know, giving them the right-of-way, you know, with the development of the roads. But I don't see that it's a prerogative of the school district to try and solve the issues of the private sector. So that's really all I have to say. And I want you guys to, you know, leave it with... have a legacy and make the right decisions. And that's basically all I have to say.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
My name is Liz Weninger. I've been a Parlay Lake resident for a long time. Not going into how long. But in the years, I have seen trees taken willy-nilly, not just the school, but all over the place. I also remember when the school was built, the new high school, that there was extra paid to re... you know, rejigger it so that SS9 would be saved. Dollar-wise, pound-foolish type thing. Spend it there, and now all of a sudden say, "It's going to be gone." Also, as far as having wetlands and ponds and what can be done with those. If it's an inventoried wetland, you can't do anything with it. And I don't know if those are natural ponds or if they're created ponds. I happen to be on the Lakes Advisory Committee for the City of Prior Lake. So I know about inventoried wetlands and the ponding and that sort of thing. There's been a lot of extra money paid out since that high school's been built that when it was built, they said it wasn't necessary... didn't need to have certain things that they've got there now. And I know you were not here at that time. I just... I cannot see tearing down another woods. I am not necessarily a tree hugger. I have been... I've watched... I watched on our road, which has just been upgraded. And the county came through and took all the... most all of the 100-year, 200-year-old trees off of it in their upgrade. So that's another area that I've seen them take it. I saw a lot of the woods go down with the Jeffers Pond thing. And I'm sorry, I'm tired of watching everything taken down. The City of Prior Lake, which I am a part of, has had the same problems they've torn down. When this came up originally, I called the City of Savage on it. And I said, "Okay, what's the problem? What are you going to do?" And they said, "No problem, SS9 will stay there." No problem. And anyway, we've got a tree ordinance. City of Prior Lake also has a tree ordinance. But when our road was done, we said, "Okay, where are you going to plant the trees to replace them?" And Scott County said, "It's not in the budget." So is it in the budget for this cost of the northern road to replace the trees? I'm not sure for that much money it would be. But I'm still against taking the SS9 because of the resource for the high school also.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your discretion.
I would just like to make a comment about... there's been some rumor about that we paid extra money for SS9. I obviously was not here at that time. But we have gone back in our records to look at that documentation to say, "Where was that extra... where was that $1 million ever referenced?" And what I do know in talking to our consultants is that when we repositioned the high school from where the current stadium is to where it is currently located, that there was a cost in that regrading. And I know that our partners here at WOLD have other information that they might want to share in addition to that or to clarify that further.
Yeah, the $1 million for SS9 is... I have no idea where that came from. I'm not aware of anything that was related to that. The high school originally was going to go about where the stadium is, a little bit south of that. And during the course of design, we discovered through soil moorings that there's a lot of bad soils there, which is what triggered the moving of the school. And as near as we can figure, that was maybe the $1 million that was talked about, but it's hard to connect those. And I was not the consultant or you had a real estate agent that helped you procure the land. But the land that it's on actually belonged to the county at the time that you got it. And it was purchased partly to increase your acreage because there's a lot of unusable land with the wetlands and sloped areas. And it was frankly, a pretty good deal at the time. And it was also quoted that it was bought for the trees. And I don't know what the district's motivation was, but it wasn't something that I remember being talked about as a reason to buy that land. I don't know if that covers the pieces you're thinking of.
Thank you.
Okay. Dom, I don't want to get into a debate.
I'd like to hear from other people.
Well, I'd like to hear from some other people.
I was there when they had the...
No, I... I appreciate that. I'd like to get some other people to talk, and then we can maybe come back and readdress this issue. But we've had quite a bit of dialogue. I understand your role. And I'm not trying to cut off conversation necessarily as much as I am trying to get as much... Thank you. Anybody else?
I'd like to hear from a new people.
Yeah.
Mr. President, thank you so much for letting me up once more. I see one of... as one of the biggest problems I see one of, as one of the biggest problems that you on the board, and not necessarily just referring to the chairman, we are, this meeting here for the school board members to take inputs. And if they don't like it, then they should talk to me, not you alone. But here, my is, my problem that I think you face is that you are in between various organization or legislative or cities and districts. And it appears to me that the communications, that net doesn't work. Please be careful. Try to get them together, meet in a room, all of them. Because when I talk to the Shakopee County people, Scott County people, I hear things completely different than what you tell me, you on the committee. And when I talk to Savage people, they are actually, they are not pushing you. Don't give us that impression. So please look for the links in between those things. Then you can do something. And beware of those who say, who practice the old tactic of divide and conquer. Don't do that.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. And, you know, I'd like to say, I do feel like I've been doing a lot of speaking as a member of the building committee, also as a board member at the point in time that we originally developed this site. And certainly anybody else on the board is welcome to comment or ask questions. It's not my intention to dominate the conversation, please. I prefer not to dominate the conversation. Looks like we have another speaker.
Toddmer, Prior Lake, Hawk Ridge Road, I guess. I don't know what else we need, though.
That's fine.
All right. I guess, been in Prior Lake since fifth grade. I guess that seems to be one of the, how long you been here? So I have a question. Can I ask a question and maybe get an answer?
Okay.
It was brought up earlier about safety. I think there was a, one of the criteria was safety as you evaluate the proposals. Is there a safety difference between the two proposals? I haven't heard much discussion about that with the folks, and so I would just be interested to understand what the feeling is about the safety and what those elements of concern are in between the two.
Please.
Dom, I'd love another member would like to speak.
I'm also on the building committee. And one of the big concerns that came up is the idea of having a twenty, on the school property, twenty-five-foot retaining wall, on top of that, a six-foot fence. That's to keep, keep kids off. We know what high school kids like to do. The other concern was eighty feet of retaining wall on the opposite side, six-foot fence on top of that. Concern is students, kids climbing over the fence, spraying 2012 or whatever across the top of the fence, across the top of the wall. Bad enough trying to clean it off, worse is if they fall. And that's where my, personally, my biggest concern is, I do not want students or kids thinking they want, see who can write the biggest letters on top of the wall.
Is there any, the second proposal up there?
So proposal number two eliminates the need for the retaining walls. It's also been part of the discussion in the committee that the traffic flow in option two would be more residential. One of the safety concerns that I personally have is we have 700 cars coming into that site and out of that site, all at the same time. And to minimize the traffic in the morning and the afternoon while meeting the city's need for their traffic, for their traffic plan is, is one of the pieces that is a safety concern of mine.
And then I would add to that, that the commercial area, which would be along the forty-four side, will be accessed through a different entryway into that development, which would keep that traffic from coming through the development and then back out at the stoplight with our cars and our buses on, at those peak times. So both the, the walls themselves and the traffic flow, as it feeds into the traffic light at 154th Street, were those areas of concern about safety for students.
Yeah, it'd be interesting, have you spoken much to the city of Prior Lake? Because there's been some fairly significant retaining wall builds as well, with the fences and for, I'm, would be interested in how the city interprets it to not be a safety issue, that they actually even funded the activity or at least helped the builder along over, and this is in Northwood Bridge area development, there's some fairly steep walls, but, you know, that they, they put properties right up against the retaining wall and they're fairly steep. I don't know what the height is, but there does seem to be safety concerns from that area, and it tends to be smaller kids. So I would just, it'd be interesting to see why, basically, why the city of Prior Lake is okay with it.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Taylor Francis. I'm from Prior Lake. And I just wanted to let you know that high schoolers are not necessarily always crazy. We do have a sixty-foot drop inside of our school. The school is three stories tall. And if somebody was going to do something irrational, it's, it's not necessarily a safety issue that we have. Somebody could easily jump off the third story. So quite clearly, safety is not necessarily the biggest concern that we have here. Also, I know that, Tom, you had discussed some concern about people writing on the wall. I don't recall ever seeing graffiti on our high school, which again, is a sixty, eighty big, huge wall. The only time I ever saw something written on it was when another school wrote on it. Kids are not necessarily disrespectful. Kids are not necessarily out to hurt themselves in any particular way. I have yet to see any type of accident, car accident in our parking lot, the way that it currently is. So I don't believe that safety should be the number one concern in your guys' decision. The number one concern really needs to be what's best for the kids, what's best for the school district as a whole, what's going to improve our education system the best. And I think you need to consider what's going to help us the most, whether it's going to be those trees being there or whether we need those, those ball fields. And quite honestly, I feel that the trees offer us a much more dynamic, dynamic learning experience than those ball fields would. There's no replacement for these trees. But there is a replacement for ball fields. We can get them elsewhere. There are other places, there is other land, but there is no way we will ever get this land ever again. There is no way we will save these thousand trees. We will not have another 1,000, 200-year-old trees for ourselves to protect for another 200 years. So I urge you to consider all the options on the table and understand that when we're making this decision, it's more about the kids, it's more about us, not about what's, what the government wants, the city of Savage, what private enterprise, Prior Lake aggregates want, what is best for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Hi, DeWaltins again. Proposal two absolutely cannot even be considered anymore. Consider each of us that have come up here as times 500. There's 500 people in this town, I know, that feel the same as I do. They're just not as crazy and they're not going to come up here and make a sign. Please consider that there are more of us. It seemed that the article in the paper tried to vilify the forest itself for having oak wilt, ooh, which is a naturally occurring process in a forest, I would assume, for having poison ivy. You know, if there wasn't poison ivy, there must be a reason that God put it on the earth.
Okay.
Correct?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
I am. Thank you.
Who?
I appreciate it.
Oh, and, okay, proposal two, no. Proposal one, proposal zero.
We got, we got your comments from before, but thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Julie Lundquist. I'm resident of Prior Lake. And I don't feel that I'm late to the party. I've been, I've been tracking the SS9 issue for a few years, although I do admit this is the first time I've come publicly and spoke out. I must admit, I come to this meeting and I'm going to leave even far more confused. I'm going to leave really questioning what's really happening. And I want to let you know, I don't think either option is a good option. As leaders, I think we're called to make decisions as freely as we can. Trying to make a decision without the impact of finances, trying to make decisions without the impact of status, trying to make decisions knowing that we're going to make some people happy and make some people angry. I would, I would just ask you, if you could do anything that you wanted in regards to this decision with SS9, completely free of all those restraints, what would you choose as leaders? And I guess the second thing is, are there really other options? Have we really looked at all the options? The third piece is, I happen to coach soccer. I happen to be one of the people who is absolutely blessed to be able to spend two months out of every year standing out on those fields, those girls soccer fields at a butt to SS9. These kids, as we all know, are already sensory deprived. Very rarely do they have the opportunity to actually awake to the present moment and take a look around them and have their eyes open to the amazing gifts that this community brings them. Those girls on those soccer fields get that opportunity every day. Those students get that opportunity every day. They're in there building those forts or walking through those woods or the cross-country teams running through the hills. It is a small parcel of land, but what I tell my kids every single day is it's the little decisions that make a difference in this world. If we get in the habit of making poor, small decisions, it's far easier to make large decisions. The other issue in regards to the fields, I'm a soccer coach, I think it's great, I love soccer. However, if we are going to do mining and clearing that land, we are going to drastically harm the soil structure. And if we're going to come back in and try to put in fields, we all know costs in maintenance of fields. Turf is one of the most expensive things to maintain naturally. There's fertilization, there's water, there's lining of the fields, there's, there's mowing, there's weed control. And I don't want soccer fields to be a bonus of this at all. We need to save these trees, we need to save our kids and just make some good decisions free of all outside influences. And I just really urge you to be heroic leaders today.
Eric?
Yes.
Just point of clarification, I mean, for all intents and purposes, proposal one is maintaining status quo. And it really would be up to the city then to decide what they would want to do with their right of way at some point. I, I don't think the proposal one is saying that a road is going to go in in the next year or two. It would really, at that point, be to the desires of the city of Savage, correct?
Right. Proposal one is if we do nothing. And the, on proposal one, when you see that southern red line, horizontal going east-west, that has been determined by Scott County, has a right-in, right-out or a three-quarter turn to begin with, but then eventually being a right-in, right-out. That is already on the design. And the north-south roadway is the platted roadway of the city of Savage. John, have I missed anything? That's it, right? That's if we do nothing. SS9 stays, we have an 800-foot wall on the west side of that roadway that would then protect SS9. It would be at some points 23 to 25 feet tall, most of the time 12 feet. And John's coming up again to add more clarification to that.
Chairman Superintendent, I don't want to waste all that training I've had on the telestrator now. The, the proposal one is status quo. As you mentioned, the east-west roadway in the south end, that's been identified as an access directly into Prior Lake Aggregates, that's going to be constructed as part of the 27 reconstruction. That north-south road, I can't tell you when that would be constructed. The city council would have to order that improvement. It might not be for 10 years. So it would be status quo for some amount of time. So this, until that time, when this east-west road is constructed, there would be a retaining wall on the south side where there's a wetland, because we'd be trying to maintain grade as close as we could to the soccer field. So there would be a retaining wall, much shorter retaining wall on the south side. But then that roadway would connect directly to some future roadway in Prior Lake Aggregates, and that north-south road would just be platted right away until some future date that council directs us to move forward.
Right.
Could I ask a clarification? When the original north-south road was platted, there was no idea that that red 157th would be there, correct?
Right.
Mr. Chair and board members, I don't know exactly what was known or what wasn't known at that time. The red location was identified as part of a recent study that the city undertook, and we agreed to it with Scott County. We were planning access locations throughout this area. And that's why I indicate that the north-south road, it may be 10 years, it's really going to depend on traffic and, and I guess the pace of the development in Prior Lake Aggregates.
Thank you. I can, you know, I can say from my time on the building committee, there wasn't a lot of thought given to that road, other than let's draw something that meets the parameters that were given. There was no thought as far as what that might look like going down, because there was no reclamation plan for Prior Lake Aggregates at the time. So we didn't extend our view past our board. Yes?
Mr. Chair, if I might add, one of the things, based on the decision, is my understanding is Prior Lake Aggregates is looking for some guidance as to what this will look like in the future. Is it going to be that, that option, that second option, or is it going to be the current right of way? And then I think they're going to plan their land reclamation activities accordingly. And I think that's, with the county roads being reconstructed, I think that's generating a timeline for them to do their mining and, and use planning. And I think that's really, you know, what's partly driving getting a decision on this matter.
Good evening.
Rose Christie, Rose Christie and Prior Lake. And I've lived here for some thirty-some years. As I listened to even just this last comment, I am concerned that, I think the point was that we were looking at proposal two and feeling that we needed to make that because this road is going through and we need to follow up right away. And then all of a sudden, as we listen to again here, this idea that this, if we were to say with proposal one, it may be 10 years down the line, we don't know, it could be five. But why would we be jumping into proposal two, wiping out woods and for something that we don't know where it's going yet? And if we have, this time, if we look at proposal one, you know, there, we're saying that road might go in there. We've got 10 years or five years, whatever the amount is. We've got time to really think about what's going to be the impact, where that road is. Does it really need to be, is that development on time? What's going to happen? We looked at developments within the last couple of years. It just sort of fell out because the economy went down, things changed, developers lost out. And now, we, if we jump into proposal two, we're making some big-time changes based upon dreams, developments in the future that we don't really know, is it going to be necessary? I, I don't think we need to be jumping into this as quickly as it looks like we're trying to. And, and I think a second point I would make would be, there were comments been made, there's the poison ivy, there's the oak wilt, there's the buckthorn. Those are things that can be mitigated, that we can work with. We've, kids, Dr. Olson and seniors back in mid-2000s went in and cleaned up some of that. People have talked about other cleanup jobs there. We can maintain some kinds of, of, of use for that, that woods there. And I just don't think we can just decide we need to quick make a decision here because the city is pushing for, let's all do it at the same time. I think we need to step back and I really think we should be looking at other proposals. We should be talking to the city of Savage and saying, what are other options besides what we've got on the board here? What are the other ways that we could look at this? Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board this evening?
Sharon Allen, I'm a city resident and, I'm a city of Savage resident. I just have a quick question about the safety on those retaining walls. Did you look at an opportunity to tier that? I mean, is it just going to be an 80-foot drop-off or can they step that down and tier that on the Prior Lake Aggregates side? It just is like there's fear about an 80-foot drop and is there room for tiering it so it's not quite as devastating?
I'm going to recognize Ms. Kapala again.
Mr. Chair and board members, that's the total relief they would need to retain. It very well could be terraced and incorporated as part of some development plan. That would all be subject to review of our Parks Recreation and Natural Resources Commission and our planning commission and the city council. I, if they have a development on the other side, I don't know that I would put a single retaining wall in, that that's, that's all. I don't think they'd attempt to try and fit it in with the development somehow, but we have two concepts of that. it in with the development somehow, but we have two concepts of that, that would be an option and be subject for review by the city.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board this evening? Yes, sir.
Dan Swenson. My, are we being, is, are the Prior Lake Savage schools being forced to put this road in?
Well, on proposal one, which is one up there, that is platted, that belongs, that is property of the City of Savage, and John can speak to that in any, in future terms, that means that they have the right to put a street in there, a two-way street, and that has, that is part of the agreement, of the purchase agreement that we have inherited. So, if we do nothing, then that at some future point in time could be developed as a roadway on the north-south.
I, I know that Prior Lake Aggregates wants to develop their property at some point in time. I think for the amount of cost that it would take for them to fill this hole in the ground, which has taken a lot of time and a lot, a lot to pull out of there, I mean, it's going to be a phenomenal cost to fill this up, and then to go ahead and market it, put it on the, and actually sell the lots or sell the commercial property, in my opinion, makes this virtually impossible. In other words, who would buy it? They have other choices of commercial property, they have other choices to build homes, why would they want it, why would they want to do that? So, I think filling up a sandpit comp, concept is just a dream, you know, I don't think it's, I don't think, I don't think it'll work. So, the other thing I don't understand is we have a road coming out, I know, I drive by there all the time, and I see the students exiting, it looks like the proposed road is awfully close to the existing road. And I think maybe you should take a look at the, not the Highway Department so much, but maybe talk to the Savage Police Department and some of the other departments, and see if this is a, a, a good concept to come up with. In other words, is this just going to impair traffic and have people coming around a curve and hitting the brakes because somebody's turning or doing anything else? In other words, is this just going to be another problem? Obviously, the road is open, people are used to it that way, and I don't see it. I, I completely disagree with proposition two. I don't want to see those trees go, they took down the trees across from my house, five acres, they just came over there one day, they found a glitch in the city ordinance, and took out five acres right onto 21. It was beautiful, everybody that drove by it looked at it, I think it should have become a park, but the owners found a little way to go ahead and do it, and it's a huge loss. I mean, everybody in the neighborhood, all the houses that butt up to it, everybody said it's noisy, everybody doesn't like the look of it, it's just a big bare open lot, and I think that's what you're going to end up on proposition two, you're just going to have a great big bare seven acres that's sitting there with nothing. When you had something that is just this impressive, in other words, you can't replace it, it's just not going to come back again. I think that unless you're being totally forced to do this, I think you should just plain say that this isn't a good concept. If you actually paid a million dollars for seven acres, that's 142,800 dollars an acre, that's phenomenal cost, and then if you're talking about money, you're losing that, you're just flat losing it. And I don't understand why, money-wise, you think this, that would be a smart deal. I don't know who owns all this land, and I don't think the taxpayers do, I mean, somebody must have put the money up, and maybe the taxpayers are making payments on it, where they have bonds and whatever way to do it, but, I mean, that's, that's, that's land that somebody borrowed money against, and so I don't know, I don't, I don't know how this all works, but if, if I was a bank and I owned it, and you were going to take out that hunk of land, I'd, I'd say, no, you don't. I'd say, you're going to pay me the difference in that, because I'm taking the loss on it. So, I don't know who owns it, maybe you guys know who actually financed this whole thing and actually, I know, I know the school isn't paid for, and the property isn't paid for, but somebody, somebody borrowed the money from somebody.
Okay, thank you. Sure. I'm going to try to keep the repeats down, but I, I.
I, I, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
I kind of brought up the issue, but I did like the young lady in the back corner, her idea about the tiering, because if, if there was a safety concern, if you tiered the walls at 10 feet, and I'm not a civil engineer, so we'd have to have some folks comment, but even the highest wall, which is an 80-foot wall, would be quite scary, but if you tiered it in 10 feet, that would be eight tierings, and if you had like a five-foot landing, 10-foot landing, 10-foot landing on each one, that'd only build out of 80 feet into the property. So, that?
I'll, you know, I'll look to Mr. Anderson as well, but our, our discussion isn't necessarily how that property gets developed, that's an issue that Prior Lake Aggregates will work out with the city, we're more concerned about the total 80-foot drop.
Right, but I would think, I mean, if this is a negotiation and working out with neighbors, right, I wouldn't just dig a hole, but I would think that as an agreement, right, or some type of, you know, working with people, that it would seem like a good solution. I mean, if, if there's a huge safety concern in that, what's really kind of driving things is the retaining walls? I mean, you've seen them tiered before, and like on the backside, I think you mentioned on the backside of that development, you certainly aren't going to make that one solid wall, I mean, that, that, that looks huge. But I would, I would guess the concern from the board would be if you tiered it at 10 feet.
Yes, please.
That wall, that property is not, that's not school property, we could make a suggestion, but we have, we really do not have any say in how, what that would look like, on the backside, on the 80-foot.
Completely understand, but safety is one of the, the driving factors in our decision, right? There certainly is a solution there that could mitigate safety from a community perspective, it wouldn't necessarily be us, right? I mean, you could say, carve in an extra 80 feet and tier the wall on your side, right? You could do that. But I, I guess the only for bringing it up is I think there are some other opportunities to relieve some of the safety concerns, because I'm with you, I mean, those walls scare me.
And again, there's, there's a whole process, and, and I'm going to kind of cut it off here, but there's a whole process of that Prior Lake Aggregates will need to go through with the city that we're not a party to. Anybody else? Any comments from the board? Questions?
Do you want to share the timeline?
Um, I'll, actually.
Let me turn it off?
Sure.
Tonight is an opportunity for, for public feedback. We had thought we were going to bring it forward to the board for a second reading and a vote on March 14th, which would be next Monday. We've decided to delay that until April 11th, which is our. 2011, April 11th, 2011, just, we're going to move it out to the next meeting. So, that we, so that we have time to reflect on the comments tonight, we'll have a further Building Committee meetings, and have a time to process the feedback that you've given us tonight. So, we will be making that decision on April 11th. Again, we have two options, proposal one, which would be we do nothing, and we wait until a time when the City of Savage determines, determines that it's the right time to access that roadway, which it could be in five years, in 10 years, or never, we don't know that, or we have an opportunity to do proposal two, which would be to take out SS9 and have a north entrance into the Prior Lake Aggregates development, and also a south entrance without having it cut through the middle of our property. So, those are the two proposals the committee will continue to study and bring back recommendations to the school board on April 11th.
Tom? Please? I would just, you know, again, we've, we've, I've had a brief chance to look at this as best I can, and, you know, I, I'll look for Councilman Abbott to talk to the city staff and bring that information back to the school district on any changes or new proposals that are coming from the city. This is basically, this step is, is the school board requesting or not requesting a change to the plat, which will then go through the entire city process, and there'll be numerous other hearings that will occur as, as a part of that. Yes, Mr. Wolf?
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening, I appreciate all the comments, and I hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Any, any other comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll echo Mr., I'll echo Rich's comments. We really do appreciate it, it's, it's always been our policy and our practice to take feedback from all stakeholders and the public, and on a cold and post-snowy night, I appreciate everyone coming out and sharing your thoughts and your opinions. Thank you.